During this season of pandemic. I ask Father God, all those students that have been diagnosed as positive throughout this year. I pray that they have been healed from whatever may have happened to their bodies. Even the employees that may have lost life. We pray for all those families who are dealing with loss, who are dealing with hurt and discomfort. I ask now, Father God, our students. Those that are thinking about things that might not be of you. Some may be suicidal, some may be even want to be homicide. But we cast all our cares upon you tonight, Father God. Realizing you care for all of us. And as we decrease and you increase in us, give us guidance. Touch our leaders, our superintendent, our board members. All of the staff that's affiliated with Coffey County School System. Guide our ins, our goings, and our comings. And let us be the best that we can possibly be going forward. We ask this prayer, Father God, and in the most righteous manner that we know how. Asking for your guidance upon this day and upon this meeting and upon our lives as we continue to do things to help make our organization better. This prayer we ask in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit in Jesus Christ's most holy and righteous name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, everybody has a chance to look at the agenda. We're gonna need a motion to adopt the agenda. Yes, sir. How do you basically adopt agendas presented? Lot. Mr. Wade. Okay, Dr. Lee, you want to take a moment?
All right, yes, sir. I'd like to welcome everybody here. Thank you for being here tonight. And we have an agenda planned that we'll stick to. And first on our agenda is Nichols Elementary School. We have Ms. Lori Rattrick, our principal from Nichols Elementary School. And it's good to have you here for me.
Thank you. I'm gonna have my phone just so I can check the time. I don't want it over. I cut a few slides because I thought this was gonna go too long. I'm Lori Rattrick, I'm the principal at Nichols Elementary. I don't think I've met Mr. Wade or Ms. Laura, so it's nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Um, we'll get started just by showing, I'll go back to that other side because it was very important. I have a picture of our new sign. And we are so proud of this sign. And there are no words on that when I took that picture because it wasn't working at the time. But we did get it working not long after getting it. But we, this was an operation last, I would say, May or June. I can't remember the exact date. But I do know that when we had our little drive-through, fifth grade graduation, that I had it on the sign and they got to take their pictures because we had the stop points for the parents to stop with their children to take pictures. And I had it up there. But I do appreciate this very much. That was a very nice gift for you guys to give to our school. And I think that along with the black fence behind it just makes our campus look very appealing and it is just really nice. I have enjoyed learning how to use that sign and putting out information for parents and the community to be able to see what's going on with our school and in the school system. So I love, love, love the sign. And we are home with the Redskins at Nichols Elementary School. These are just some of our demographics. Our enrollment right now is 315. We have 15 virtual students. One of those is an at-home learner who just started in January. Excuse me, he's a little kindergartner. And he's a cute little thing. And then we have 300 face-to-face that are in the building. And then I have our ethnicity broken down by race. So you can see the diversity that we have on our campus. And we do have 30 certified staff and 16 classified staff. And I have to give a shout out to our cafeteria staff. We love our ladies. They are fantastic. They have huge hearts. And our students really enjoy going in and eating breakfast and lunch. And these ladies will do anything to make sure that our boys and girls are fit. So I do have to give them a shout out. The first priority, of course, every year is safety and every day is safety. But this year, of course, it was different. It was COVID. And we had a lot of changes and restructuring that we had to make. I don't know how many rolls of blue tape we went through. You can see on the floor there where we, it looked like the interstate spaghetti junction there where the kids would get off the bus. And we had it so that they would know exactly where to go. We've since been able to remove that tape because they caught on very quickly and know exactly where to go and what procedures we have. We have the little hand sanitizers right there as they come off the bus and they use that. And they let us know if it's empty and we can get that revealed. We've been very fortunate that the county has provided us with plenty of supplies to make sure that our school is clean and safe. We've also had churches donate supplies, masks, things like that. We've had no, we've not had to worry and we've not had to dip into the principal's account or PTO to get any of those supplies. So we've been very fortunate. And you can see that some of our teachers, excuse me, my voice is a little bit weak today. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner, some of our teachers got creative and made their own dividers. And that teacher actually still uses those. Some used them for a while, didn't like them, put them down. She still uses them. And then we have some teachers who bought like the little green baskets you see in the other picture and just to keep their classrooms organized and to keep the kids not sharing materials and that kind of thing. And we had to get a little cute at Christmas and decorate our tree with some masks as the kids came in, we wanted to try to make it fun. But some of the restructuring we had to do was our pickup procedures. We had to relook at how we did that with our kids being all together at pickup. And our recess schedule, we looked at that and restructured how we do that. Of course, they still get recess every day, but it's different than how they used to do it. And water bottles, I want to thank the nutrition department for that. The teachers, I think, were rolling their eyes when we first got those. But they are very appreciative with everything. We put a plan in place and the kids use those water bottles. They bring them every day. And, you know, many of them use those actual bottles. And we've not had any problems. So thank you. Okay, we can go on. This is our safety, our officers. And we're very thankful that we have these people on our campus. And of course, Mr. Elrod, Chief Elrod is not there every day, but he was there on this day that they took the picture with Officer Ryan. And then we have Officer Michaela at the top corner. She was actually participating in one of our dress-up days that day. So she did not have her uniform on, but she was supporting her team. Go Dawgs. And I also have a picture of our audio enhancement. We are very honored to have been the first school in the system to get that. And it's kind of hard to see in that picture, but that is a map of our school. And we can just click on any classroom and then call down. That's how the intercom system works. I can often do fire drills, other kind of drills with that as well. And it goes through the PA system. And if the teacher uses their little panic button on their land yard or on the wall, it pops up a video of their classroom so we can see in real time exactly what's going on at that moment. We really like that. Our second priority after safety is most definitely instruction. We have two goals that go along with our school improvement plan. And the first one is that we will increase proficiency in all grade levels in reading fluency and writing. We want to go at or above by 3% as measured by our school-wide probes and the Georgia Milestones. We know we don't have a measure of the Georgia Milestones from last year, but we do have plenty of school-wide probes that we can use and look at for that. Some of the professional learning that we've done to reach these goals this year have been growing readers. Our kindergarten through third grade teachers are entering or finishing their second year of that. It's very intense that those teachers have worked really hard. They are observed, they are given feedback from the RISA trainers. And we have definitely seen some increase in growth with our kindergarten through third graders in their reading ability and interest in reading. We've done a lot with Study Island this year. Our academic coach is the guru of Study Island. And she has really shared her expertise with our teachers with that program and reading apps for the lower grade levels and then just general student engagement strategies. Now with our media center, you know, that's kind of the hub of where we start our love of reading. And we've had to make a lot of changes there. The students can't actually come in and check out books. They fill out a form where they can request the book and place their order for their book, kind of like they're ordering it off Amazon. We tried to make it kind of fun that way. And then the orders are delivered to them. And then they drop the books back in a drop box. And then they're quarantined, as you see in the photo there, for a certain number of days and then put back on the shelf. And we really don't have time to click on it, but you can at a later time if you want to. We have media center checkout presentations. And that's a link to the different presentations that our media specialist has put together that is shared with the students. So they can go through and get an overview of new books that we may have. If there's a holiday coming up, she'll feature those books in the presentation. So they get a taste of what's out there that they can check out. Okay, and our next goal is basically the same wording, but it's with math. And we are looking at math fluency and problem solving. And we want to increase that by 3% as well. And what we focused on in professional learning with that is our Reflex Math Program. That's new this year. We did a little bit of it last year. We piloted it in a couple of grade levels. But the teachers have really embraced that this year. They're learning how to use that data. The students are learning how to use the data. And they are really using that to be self-directed. Again, Study Island math seats for the lower grade levels. And then they're really focusing on problem-solving activities. The teachers, especially second grade, has just been phenomenal with this. They just stick out my mind because of something recent they did. They created a Starbucks cafe. And the kids had to create their orders. They had people to tally, to add up the orders, make change and that kind of thing. And so it was kind of, it was really, it was fun. They had a good time with that. And we can move on. And PBIS. We are a PBIS school. We love PBIS, honestly, we really do. You can see our redskin bucks up there in the top left corner. We begin each year by teaching our expectations and procedures. We have our posters posted throughout the building for each area. And then we have someone other than the classroom teacher to teach those procedure lessons to the students so they know how to add in each area of the school, the hallway, the cafeteria, the bathroom outside, anywhere. And then we meet monthly and we have a PBIS Tier One group and a PBIS Tier Two group. And we analyze the data, the discipline data. We drill down to specific students. And we have it down to just the few kids that we know are giving us problems. And those are the students that we focus on more positive intervention strategies. And I've got one that I'll mention in just a minute. And we can go on to the next. This is third through fifth PBIS. They do all grade levels, K-5, get to turn in the redskin bucks for various things. And some of the things are to wear a hat, wear pajamas, get their picture made with the teacher or the principal. I don't know why they would want that, but some do. They may get to choose a gamers cafe, movie time with popcorn, bingo games and things like that. And then you can see Ms. Anderson up in the top right corner doing shout-outs over the intercom. And I love these and I wanted to read one of them to you. Aubrey is a rock and redskin in Mrs. Penas' class because she is always participating and doing her work. She always shows respect and has time to listen to her friends. They're very specific about what is positive about the students. And I think they really do listen to that. And that's just something that the teacher does for those exceptionally well, students who are doing exceptionally well in class. And we have one more on PBIS, well, a couple more on PBIS, but we can move on to the next one. This one just shows our school-wide behavior matrix. And we follow this to a T. Our expectations are to be responsible, be respectful, and be safe. And if you were to click on the blue link, there are reflection sheets. So students who are consistently misbehaving in the classroom, if the teacher gets to a certain level, she makes them complete a reflection sheet. This goes all the way down to kindergarten. And they have to tell about what their behavior was, how they can do better, and what they should have done instead, that kind of thing. And then you can see the flow chart there. And that's what the teachers use, the green, yellow, and red. And that takes them through different types of behaviors and where they should be. And if they're in yellow, that's when they get to that reflection sheet. And then if they're in red, they're usually coming to the office. And we have those reflection sheets that we can look back at. So the teacher has lots of documentation. Very easy to talk to parents and explain to them what's going on in the classroom. The one thing I wanted to talk about with check-in, check-out, I'm sorry, I told you. I'm trying, I'm trying. Check-in, check-out. You see there, there's one little guy with his picture with me. He has checked out of this, but he was somebody who had some problems last year. And we started check-in, check-out. And he was assigned an adult in the building that he went to every morning with that orange sheet. And he had a goal that he had to meet. And they rated him in different areas that was divided up by his schedule. And he got, his goal was to get to a certain percentage of points each day. And once they do well over time, they phase out. And one of the rewards is to get a positive discipline referral home. And so that was his positive note home. And he, they have to come and get it signed by me. So I just had to take a picture because it was just, I was excited about it. Okay, next slide. This is just where we recognize teachers with PBIS. It's not just being positive for our students, but also for our teachers. We have a tacky little card over there with the flamingo that we go around with some prizes and goose passes or jingz passes, things like that, that they can get treats off of. And we do recognize a teacher of the month for PBIS as well. Kindness Counts. These pictures are actually from last year, but I wanted to kind of give the background of how we started with Kindness Counts. We applied for a grant through the Rural Education Foundation. They got $5,000. And we purchased buddy benches and umbrellas. And our student council were, and again, these were taken last year, that's why they're together and they're massive. They were the kindness ambassadors and they kind of led that initiative with us. And we can flip on to the next slide. And we just continued that initiative. And we're really focusing in on mental health this year and trying to make sure we're focusing on areas that students, that might help the students. So we continued this year. We started out with our tribe time, that's what we call it. And the kids meet with their teacher. We have a set time where they focus on one word. The first one was kindness and we had various activities on that day. And then in December, January-ish, if you go on to the next slide, we did a snowflake diversity activity where the kids understood that we are all like snowflakes. Everybody's unique and different in their own beautiful way. And then just last week, he can click one. We did generosity and gratitude at Toddland St. Patrick's Day. We wore green. They got to add a flower or a leaf, I'm sorry, a leaf to the generosity tree. They learned what generosity means, what gratitude means. And they did shamrocks for gratitude, the leaves for generosity. So really trying to focus in on certain character words with Trump time. And the next slide just kind of revues what I've already mentioned. The only thing that I haven't talked about is how we have really, really worked hard with Google Meets, Google Classroom, and the teachers have done a lot with Bloom. I've been very impressed with our teachers and how they have embraced virtual learning. And you see a snippet there of their lesson plans, that's just for one day. That's what the teacher does. The students have access to this all the way down to kindergarten. And the beauty of this is the lesson is there and the student has to be out for COVID, whatever it is. Now it doesn't really matter. They can pull that up on their computer. They know how to do it because they've been trained and they can follow along with the teacher. And another thing that we do virtual is family engagement. And our academic coach created this virtual family engagement website link. I don't know exactly what you call it, but we have it on our website. We have the link to it on our website. We have it on our Facebook page and we send it out through Kimbo and everything. But I would say we probably have more family involvement this year than we've ever had. If you go on to the next slide. We've kind of got creative, everything's virtual. They can't be in person, so we just send things home for them to do. And the first thing we did was PBIS. We wanted them to look at what our PBIS procedures were. And so we sent that information home. We told them to do an activity, make a poster, do something together. And you can see on the bottom right, that's a family that had created. They each created their own poster. Mom and Daddy did one too. And then there's just another poster in the mail there of something that a child brought. And then in October, we did a writing activity and it was a Halloween spooky story game. And I did put, that is in Spanish, but I want you to see that we do things in Spanish too. And you can see at the top right, the family doing their story. They were doing a little game there. And then in December, and you can go ahead and flip on. We did, we focused on reading and we called it our Christmas Extravaganza. We had staff members to read stories and we posted them on YouTube and shared those with the parents. And then we encouraged the parents to send those stories of them reading aloud, Christmas stories. And then they could also make a Christmas ornament related to that story. And right now going on, let me, the technology night, go back, I'm sorry. The technology night, we did, we felt it was very important for parents to understand things like Snapchat, some of them Minecraft, not necessarily Minecraft, but some of those other games that their kids are playing at home. And there are some negative sides to those apps. And we wanted to make that, make them aware of that. So we had some information for that one night. And then right now, we're doing a real-world math family night where parents work with their children and show them how they use math in their jobs or everyday life. Next slide is our data-driven. And you can see there that little guy with the laptop, that's his Reflex Math. That's showing where he met his goal for that particular area in Reflex Math. We've got a little kindergartner over there showing his, where he met his site word goals. And another student on the left is moving her data, her Study Island data. So students know where they are at Nichols Elementary and they know where they need to be. So we do a lot with data. Okay, STEAM. We do STEAM at least once a week. It's the teacher's responsibility because we don't have a parent who can take care of that. So they do a really good job of getting that in. Next slide is virtual learning. And on the right, you can see our little, our little guy who's the at-home learner. You can see the top of his little head on the computer. The teacher just keeps him on that cart and she just kind of rolls him around him. And so he's able to see whatever she's doing. But that particular day, he was sitting kind of low in his chair so we couldn't see his face. But anyway, but we're adopting, they've made it work and our kids are still learning. And we can go on to the last couple of slides. Workforce and Life, this is the area we need to work on. But we are trying to incorporate that any way we can. That's one way, reason that we had the math night that's real world, real life. But we did have the ag truck with the cow at the beginning of the year. And we do some activities throughout the year, but that is an area we did want to work on. And it's great to be a redskin. I do have a link there, but I know y'all don't want to, I know it's passing time. But if you want to watch that sometime, or if you can just go to our Facebook page, that's the first activity that was turned in. And the little girl explains how to triple a recipe for cookies. And it's her, that's what her mom does, she likes to bake. So she showed her how to do that.
That's great. Thank you.
Any questions?
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Very informative. Good job. All right, next on the agenda, we have our minutes from our previous meeting. If you want to take a moment to look over those. If there's no objections or changes needed, then we'll add those to the monthly meeting following this for a quick. The next item on the agenda is the financial report. And if you go to the monthly financials, you'll find four documents. And the first document is our monthly financial report overview. And you'll see that we ended the month with $24,369, $309,169.19. This is our high. A little higher somewhere. See the bump out begin to go down. Ms. Young, do you have any comments about this report? Remember, any questions?
This is as of February 28th to 2021, the ending fund balance. As Dr. Lee says, $24,399,169.19. As compared, you know, to January, there's not much change. But throughout the next few months, we will see, you know, a decrease in that funding.
If you click on the next document, this gives you the comparison. We started doing this probably about seven or eight years ago at the height of the recession. Carter Purdean, this monthly report comparing the last four years, give us an idea. You'll notice that February fund balance is $24 million as compared to last year. I do want to make a point about this. If you open the folder that I included, that I gave you before, remember, I gave you a folder. And in that, you're going to find a document that looks like this. Coffey County QBE Funding FY '21. This is the initial allotment from the state versus the midterm allotment. So we received our initial state allotment back over the summer of '20. And then at the midterm, they send us halfway through the year, they send us an updated QBE allotment, all right? And if you open that up, you'll see that our initial QBE allotment included, it was $49,502,460. And there was austerity, meaning that the state withheld $4,518,758. That was a result of COVID. If you remember when everything went south last March, they immediately felt like revenues from the state were going to go down, that their tax revenue was going to go down. So they cut us coming into this school year by $4,518,758, all right? And that was held out of our allotment sheet. And then at the midterm of this year, once they realized the tax revenues weren't going to be hit like they thought they were going to be hit, on the midterm allotment, you'll see that we're actually going to receive this year $52,43,122. And they reduced the austerity down to $1,822,977. So they reduced the amount of austerity that we're incurring. We budgeted for that $4,518,000. So this money will be coming to us in March, April, May, and June. This additional funding that we weren't expecting to get. Because when COVID hit, the state was really worried that tax revenue was going to be down. So they withheld $4.5 million. And then about two months ago, we found out that we were going to get this, it was going to be a billion eight. So at this point, we're preparing to see a little increase in state funding that we weren't expecting, all right? So when we talk about, in a normal year, our fund balance would be decreasing in a very noticeable way. We may not see the decrease that we've experienced traditionally because this is unexpected funding that we're certainly thankful for that the state is going to, going to give back to us, all right? So the QB formula that's typically funded, and last year, if you remember, was the first year in about 15 years that QBE has been fully funded. Going back to 2002, that's when they started the austerity. And we were cut over $48 million, $45 million over a 15-year period in austerity. And then last year, the governor, thank goodness, the governor fully funded QBE for the first time in about 15 years. And, but then COVID hit and we were hit with austerity again. So I just want to make that point very clear, where we're at with our state revenue, all right? That we're going to be receiving some funding we weren't expecting from the state. We're very thankful, very thankful. All right. Are there any questions about that? Does that all make sense? All right, the next document is the third document is our monthly financial report, the detailed report. Ms. Young, you want to describe this for us?
Yes, sir. This is our detail. And the first part is our revenues by the different categories. This is our detail, and the first part is our revenues by the different categories. And if you come to the second page there, you see that our total revenues as of February were at $41,233,001.05. And then continued on is our expenditures, we're compounding by the different functions of the school system. And then the second, next page is our total expenditures as of February 2021 And the last portion shows our ending fund equity as of February 2021 at $24,309,169.19.
All right. If there's no questions, the last document that we have is the East Sloss Report. And you'll see the collections for February were at $535,936.85. I think that we had two months that were lower than that, May and August. So East Sloss revenue. And I think this would be a good time to discuss. If you look in your packet that I gave you, I included something about the American Rescue Plan Act. There's a document in there on the American Rescue Plan Act. And this is the CARES 3 is what I'm calling it, is the CARES 3. And I included there the email from the Matt Cardoza with the State Department of Education. And the first part of that email explains the CARES Act 3 funding. And the second page continues their explanation of the CARES Act 3 funding. And then if you go to the third page, you'll see a chart. And that chart compares CARES Act 1, CARES Act 2, and CARES Act 3, and describes how this funding can be used. So we met with our group in here on Monday, the central office, directors, leadership team. There was a group that met in here. And we went through this chart line by line and discussed potential uses of this CARES Act funding in regards to how the federal government and state government is telling us we could use it. Also did a conference call with our facilities director, Leonard McCoy, with the Georgia State Department. I did a conference call with Leonard, and Leonard, he helps us, Dr. Banks and myself, Leonard comes and meets with us and helps us work through the five-year facility plan for the state and how we can get funding through the state of Georgia for our facility plan. So in talking with Leonard, he looked at our current application that we have out to do the HVAC work at Ambrose and Indian Creek. Y'all approved the application for that. We're going to get some state money for that. Leonard pointed out that we could use this CARES Act funding to pay our portion of that HVAC work at Indian Creek and Ambrose. And as we talked through the five-year facility plan, we also have Eastside that's eligible for HVAC work, and we'll get state money back on that. We have Satilla that's eligible for HVAC. Replace time, it's those units and those schools are on our five-year facility plan to be replaced. And they are billable towards state funding for us to get reimbursed on. And then also parts of West Green, we can get the state funding on, but we have to have a local contribution. Eastside, West Green, Satilla, Coffee Middle School. Believe it or not, by the time we get to this work, Coffee Middle School will be 15 years old. And the life expectancy of those large units, that's about the life expectancy of those units that are at the middle school. And they are eligible for replacement money through the state, but we have to have a local contribution. Door replacement, we could do some door replacement at George Washington Carver. Window replacement is part of, is in here, window replacement. Roof work is possibly in here also. We have three membrane roofs or four membrane roofs, Eastside, a couple other schools that might be eligible for this. But when it's all said and done, and as we went buses, we buy the big buses where we can spread the kids out so that they are healthy by being spread out on the buses. Also even carpeting, you could have problems with air quality from carpeting. So when we went through this list of potential things that we could use some of this funding for, and then we compared it to our five-year facility plan, this is an opportunity for us to really maximize what you see if you turn back on page midway through. It's titled "American Rescue Plan," and you see the list of counties. We will be eligible for $24,984,027 of CARES Act 3 funding. Math textbooks, we have to have math textbooks to help us with learning loss and to cover learning loss. That's a big part of this. 20% of the funding has to go towards learning loss. The math textbook adoption, we were going to pay for it out of East Sloss. That was going to be roughly a million two. That can be paid for using CARES Act 3 funding. Also the technology. We have about 4,000 Chromebooks that are going to be going out of service. Google makes these things so that after what's the life, five years, they have to be replaced. So we have about 4,000 units that within the next three years will have to be replaced. We can use this funding for replacement of those units, 4,000 units. I think we priced that at a couple million dollars. We also have the audio enhancement system that Nichols Elementary has, the camera system that puts cameras throughout the school building. They can video and record the lessons using audio enhancement. That would help with learning loss. And we have that system now at Coffee High School. We have that system at Nichols Elementary School. We're going to look at the system for George Washington Carver and then also talk with the company about other schools because we can use this CARES Act funding. And that was something that we didn't know if we were going to be able to do with our current Sloss. But with the CARES Act funding, we're pretty sure it will be eligible. And then textbooks, facilities, technology, summer school. We're planning a very robust summer school program to help with learning loss. After-school program, we'll be able to help with learning loss. We're planning a robust after-school program the next couple of years. Social emotional learning. We talked with our Tanya Johnson, Dr. Johnson, our special education director, and our special services director, Dana Bickers. And we're looking at a bilingual counselor. We have around 20% of our population is ELL, so we're looking at a bilingual counselor, a school psychologist, and one or two other counseling-type positions for our young people to address social emotional learning. And so there were several other things on the list. I can't think of them right this minute. But all that being said, when we compiled it all together, we basically have a rough draft of a budget of $20 million for this funding. So we're excited about that. We feel like it gives us an opportunity to offset some of our Sloss funds that we weren't sure, if there were some things we were going to be able to do. It looks like now we may be able to do some of those things that we just weren't sure about. And so this money is very much needed. As I said earlier, we've been incurred $45 million in austerity since 2002. And so this funding will help us offset that $45 million in austerity since 2002 to do some things that we need to do in the district. So just wanted to point that out. And while I had y'all here together, be able to talk through the CARES Act 3 funding. Are there any questions? Can you give us a breakdown and then we'll get it all figured out? Yes, sir. What project you guys are doing. Yes, sir. We're going to work more on that budget. And a piece of the CARES Act 3 funding to remember is it's a reimbursement program. So we have to have money upfront to be able to do the work and then get reimbursed, all right? And it has to be approved before they will reimburse us. So we have to send this budget to the State Department, and then the State Department has to approve it. And then we can get reimbursed for the funding. So it's going to be a very technical-type operation to use the funding, but our people have already been working on it and have a pretty good handle on how we can use the funding to put our system in a good position over the next four years. And we have till September of 2024 to use up these funds. So we've got some time to work on how we will use them. But the part that's really encouraging is we'll be able to make up for that austerity that we have suffered over the years. And then also will help us with our East Sloss to be able to do some things that we weren't sure if we might be able to do or not, all right? And so, all right. Governor's $1,000 supplement. As we all read in the papers over the last few months, the governor's office, and if you will look in your packet at this sheet, I included the email that we received today from the Georgia Department of Education. The state board approved it today at the state board meeting. The $1,000 for school employees, all right? And you can read the email that was sent to us today. And you can turn to the second, the third page, and you'll see that Coffee County will receive $1,026,800 with $14,888.70 for a total of $1,41,688.70 to go towards the $1,000 per employee. So I'm asking the board to approve tonight that we do a one-time employee supplement for $1,000. The superintendent recommends board approval to allow each full-time and part-time employee of the Coffee County School System and contracted custodial workers to receive the $1,000 retention supplement as discussed. The supplement for each employee will be included in the regular monthly meeting agenda for vote. That's this? Yes, sir. That would be $1,000 for employees. Yes, sir. And we're also asking for the $1,000 for our contracted custodial workers. And we've worked out an agreement with our vendor that we contract with for custodial, and they're going to, they're going to get that money, they're going to disperse the money to the custodial workers. Whom will they save this? We are going to try to have it out before everybody leaves for spring break next Friday. We are going to try to have the money dropped in. And I say try to have it because they just, as you see from the email, they just sent the account numbers today. And finance and payroll have to take the money and they have to touch each employee and as far as in the system to drop the money. So it's going to be a tedious process that hopefully we can get done by Friday of next week. So that's our goal. Any questions about that? All right. Well, thank y'all. Thank you for what you do. Thank y'all for putting the system in a good place to be able to do this for all of our employees. It's a big deal. I know it'll be greatly appreciated for all the staff. And I do want to thank the governor. The governor received an allotment of the CARES Act funding, and it was his discretionary to be able to use for whatever he wanted to use it for. And the governor chose to give it to the teachers and the school employees. So we want to thank Governor Kemp, Dominique LaRickey, our local representative, for standing up for us and making sure that all of our school system employees are taken care of during these challenging times. All right. Renaissance Learning Proposal. We have Ms. Miller here tonight to talk to us about Renaissance Learning.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Thank you, board. I do thank y'all for the extra contribution to us, but especially to, especially to our custodians because even though they're contracted employees, they've worked hard too, and we do appreciate that. If you think back to the board retreat, I spoke to you all about Renaissance Learning and Accelerated Reader. I told you that we were going to have to do something differently. And so since then, we've had a demo, we've talked to the representative, we've done a lot. And so tonight, I wanted to present the proposal for the program. Basically, just to reiterate what I talked about in February at the retreat, Renaissance Learning is the company, but the program is Accelerated Reader and Star Reader that we will be getting with your approval. This program promotes independent reading. It helps with students' leg sight growth, their reading ability. It also will help with vocabulary enrichment and enhancement. We've heard, I think I told you this, that in February, we meet lots of times with a guy named Bobby Smith who helps us understand CCRPI and how we can take our data and really understand our data and move our students in a positive direction. And he has forever said, we really need to increase students' vocabulary, and this program will help with that, as well as literacy skills. So we are asking you to consider this program for us right now and in the past, since 2012 when we got the Striving Reader grant. We purchased a lot of, at that time, they were Scholastic products. But since then, Hope Mifflin Hardcore bought those products. And we still use some of them, but Reading Counts is the program that we've been using to promote independent reading and get points. If you've got any children or had any children in the school system, you probably know what I'm talking about. Hope Mifflin is no longer supporting Reading Counts. So we are either going to be without a program or we need to get a new program. So our schools, our media specialists, they would like to go with Accelerated Reader because we feel like it's a great solid program. It's been around a long time, and it will do what we needed to do as well as more. So what I have here is the proposal for three years. The reason three years is because we would pay for it by the year, but we can get a better rate by getting a three-year contract. And three years is always, whenever you start a brand-new program, which we have used Accelerated Reader years ago, but it really has improved since we used it when my children were little. But we will get a better rate. So if the program goes up between now and the time our contract runs out, we don't pay anymore. We still pay this price. So Chan, if you will go to the next document, the other document, there should be two attachments. This kind of tells us the payment plan. two documents, two attachments, this kind of tells us the payment plan. So obviously, the first year, there's a little extra cost. One, because you see that we're going to be invoiced on July first, but I asked them to please let us have the program start on May first. And that's because there's a little front-end work that we're going to have to do to kind of transition our media centers a little bit. Some of our books still have Accelerated Reader labels in the back of them, but some of our newer books do not. So there's a company that we can get those labels printed and it's just a matter of fill and stick them in the books, but that's going to take some time. So I want to give our media specialists an opportunity to do some of that work so that when we start school in August, we're ready to roll with Accelerated Reader. So there's continuity in learning, continuity in reading for children, and it's not any downtime and we're without a program. So that's one reason that cost is a little inflated, as well as there's always an initial just startup cost to try to get everything transferred over. It will communicate with our student information system, Infinite Campus. And so every night at midnight, the students who have enrolled in our school or changed from West Green to Nichols or East Side to West Side will be populated in those schools. So it works with our system. So we have lots of programs that do that, so that's not going to be anything new. So the first year, the cost is ninety-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fourteen cents. And then the two years after that, it would be seventy-six thousand, six hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cents. This is a yearly renewal. They would bill us, as you can see, July one each year. You all know, I told you on February, in February, that we applied for the L4 Georgia two thousand and nineteen Code Part II grant. We applied last year, but we didn't get it. But if you remember, I told you what it, we really were hurt that we didn't get the money, but because we were doing great things out of our system, that's one reason we didn't get it. But we still have hopes that we're going to get it this year. However, this is part of our learning loss plan and we can pay for this out of our CARES three money and for these years. This would be FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four. It would meet the deadline of those three years, as Dr. Leece just alluded to. Should we get the L4 Georgia grant, we can go back and retract and pay for it out of that grant. So regardless, we're going to, our plan is to pay for it out of state-owned funds, not general state-owned funds. So but it is just our desire tonight to ask you to approve this for purchase. Any questions?
If you all, and I have no problem with the program, you know, our whole thing here is education literacy, if you please, elementary schools, how much they use this, I have no problem with the program, we're paying for it, just out of curiosity, if we do this as a three-year deal and in year four, do we have to completely start over or is there just, we just keep?
It's just continuity. You just, you just renew your subscription.
So we just renew our subscriptions and we keep making that plan as long as we feel like we're getting what we want.
That's right. And we do that with a lot of our programs that we have, you know, maybe initially there was that front-end cost that was a little more to get it started, but we just have a renewal fee. And at that point, at the end of FY twenty-four, we could go back to the table and try to get the best price again and possibly some money. Coffee County School System can get a price for, and I, you know, for a long time, the federal programs, people would not let us get a multi-year contract because it just wasn't in their protocols. But now they will. We just have to pay for it by the year.
Is this not a three-year start? We can take this as long as we want to.
Right. And we've used this program before.
Yeah, I remember.
But honestly, the reason we stopped is because we were buying that big package from Scholastic and Reading Counts was kind of part of that package. But Dr. Newell and I have talked, he has, he has talked with the representative from Renaissance. They're being very supportive. We're just waiting for approval for us to push it forward. So.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I'm excited about getting Accelerated Reader back in our schools. I like Reading Counts, but they are, it's a proven system that I think our kids will really, really benefit from. All right. Surplus property. Dr. Newell had presented some computer monitors and classroom projectors that are in, have gone out of service and we had this on the agenda last month and presented it, so asking the board that we place this on the consent agenda to put these items on Gov. deals for surplus. All right. The next item on the agenda is the bid quotes for purchase. We have the bus purchase here and we have our transporter, transportation director, Mr. Gady, you're here with us tonight and you want to describe what you're asking for.
Sure. Thanks for having me tonight. We are asking the board to approve the five eighty-seven passenger Bluebird All-Americans. These are the big buses that we use for our trips, the football, the basketball, the ROTC, the AG, so on and so forth. And these buses will be kept at the shop for those purposes. The five we are using now, we're going through rotation. So requesting for approval of these buses here.
And we did receive a state QVE allotment. They usually do bus bonds and we usually call them our bond monies that they give us. Some years back when it was really lean, they might give us one, enough to purchase one bus. And then they got to where they were giving us enough to purchase two, but this year they've given us enough to purchase three buses. And they're, they're not doing a bond this year, they're putting straight into QVE. So we titled it State Bus Allocation Amended Adjustment.
It's not the old bus replacement funds they used to give us.
Yeah. So.
We're getting eight or five?
We're getting five right now and then what we talked about is coming back possibly in June or July and getting another five. Because we can use these buses to spread the children out and prevent the spread of COVID by spreading children out of the buses. So that will help with preventing the spread of COVID. So we may be able to use CARES Act three funding for those buses for the local contribution.
Any questions on the buses?
Good for you. I know y'all already want more.
I ain't mad.
Any questions, anybody? Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you.
We also have maintenance, purchase vehicles. And Mr. Gady, did you price those out for?
I did. I priced them up. Mr. Spikes said he needed a couple of trucks to, we did price out three. The three people that responded back to us, you see the price there, but my recommendation, Alavidra Ford for thirty-one eighty-six four. These are F250s with a work body. Really, really helpful for our maintenance guys.
And we've not replaced just general makes trucks. I don't, I don't think in the last ten years we've bought.
It just comes with, keep these two trucks going and just buy them.
Yeah. So we've got our monies where taxpayers got their money worth out what we're replacing. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gady.
Thank you.
And we've got our maintenance director, Mr. Spikes here. Do you have any words about that, Mr. Spikes?
The trucks that they're going to replace, one of them's a two thousand and two model. I don't know what the last McKinnon field on it was, but it stayed in the shop for about a week and a half. And the other one is a nineteen ninety-six model.
All right. Well, I would say y'all have been good stewards of taxpayer dollars and it's time to get two new trucks. All right. The next item on the agenda is the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two student handbook. We have Dr. Banks here to discuss the handbook. Dr. Banks?
We have, within the handbook, got feedback from the middle school today about some changes within the handbook. One change from the high school. I have all the things compiled after we converge at the principal's directors meeting, which is coming up, is coming, is coming Tuesday. And I will have it back to you guys for review for a full month at the April's board meeting. So hopefully we get final approval at the meeting in May. But some of the things that's aligned with what happened from middle school and high school right now is pertaining to the dress code. So I think both, both levels are going to want holes above the knee should be prohibited moving forward from the changes from what we had this past year. In addition to that, there's some slight changes that the middle school wants to have pertaining to vaping. That has become a big problem at the middle school level and actually at the high school level as well. We also are going to be looking in months to come of purchasing a device that will go in all bathrooms that will detect smoke as well as detecting THC, that sort of thing, and also will detect sounds. If there's an aggressive fight going in the building or wherever, it will, it will be able to detect that and send out a code for that type of situation at your own campuses and within our district. So moving forward into next year, I think we're going to be stronger next year than what we are this year. Another thing, when I went to the handbook session at RISA, they talked about with the pandemic that we've been enduring, enduring right now, they talked about promotion retention policies, they talked about attendance policies, and they also talked about virtual schooling type policies. I don't think we're going to have to need the first two, but there will be something in the handbook in the next school term pertaining to virtual learning, if we actually go to that route. And Ms. Miller and I have talked about that briefly, but there may be a statement according to Dr. Leece pertaining to that. But other than that, that's where we at right now in the handbook. There will not be many changes recommended for next year. So if you guys go over the handbook and see what we have in it this year, if we have any needed changes, then we'll discuss that in the months ahead. Other than that, that's basically all I have pertaining to the handbook. So with this year, I would say this year was an unusual year for everybody. We made, we made adjustments, we looked at accountability and all that kind of stuff. So moving forward, I think we will be stronger in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two than what we are this year. We're not weak this year, we're also stronger this year as well. So I appreciate the work everyone does and appreciate the leadership from our superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Thank you for mentioning the vaped detectors because those would be CARES Act three eligible. Vaping has been proven to damage lungs in relation to COVID and so the vaping detectors would certainly help us prohibit vaping. And so they are, they are not cheap units. They're around four thousand dollars a unit, but Dr. Banks and Chief Elrod and Dr. Newell did a conference call with the vendor and the way they described it to me, they were very impressed with the technology that's part of this vape detection software and hardware. So they look kind of like little fire alarms and they go in the bathrooms and if somebody vapes, it will detect it. And so we're excited about the opportunity to be able to get that.
Will it put them in a lock box?
Uh.
It's got a tamper switch on it.
So if somebody tampers with it.
It'll go off.
It'll go off. So and then the other piece was the virtual, we checked with our RISA director and I had the RISA director, Greg Jacobs, contact Harbin and Hartley, the firm that the RISA uses, and Corey Kirby, an attorney with, with Harbin and Hartley, sent the RISA a statement that we can use for virtual learning. And it basically sends anybody interested in virtual learning to the Georgia Department of Virtual Learning. And there is a Georgia virtual learning that we will refer students and families to. And if somebody chooses to go that route next year, that's pretty much going to be our plan for virtual learning. We're going to hope everybody comes back face-to-face and that'll be in our handbook. So we'll, we'll be working on that statement as given to us by RISA to place in the handbooks and it had been vetted by the attorneys at Harbin and Hartley as meeting the requirements according to Georgia law. So great job, Dr. Banks. Thank you. So you've got a first read of the handbook there and y'all's leisure time, you can read the handbook and study that. And if you have any, any questions or concerns, we'll talk about it next month. The two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar. We have surveyed the staff. Ms. Miller has done an excellent job putting the calendar together and we put out four samples calendars that the staff had a chance to respond to. And the calendar that received the most positive responses is Calendar D. You'll see there were three hundred positive responses for Draft D. So we are bringing Draft D back to the board tonight to ask you to approve the school calendar for next year. And it's very similar to our current school calendar. The major difference is the end of the school year. We will do post-planning on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of May and then we will have graduation on the twenty-eighth. And I was a little nervous about that after having worked at the high school level, being a high school principal, I was a little concerned how the staff would react to that. But Dr. Cummings told me that the staff was very positive to that because they'll do the graduation preparations during post-planning and that a lot of the staff were very pleased with that. So that'll be a change in the way we've done things over the years, but according to our high school principal, that was received well.
It was similar issue with COVID, you know, they were already out of school and they were already doing graduation practices and everything.
Yes, sir. So what I like about this calendar is students aren't back in in June or July. So there's a true two-month period there where students and staff are not in the buildings. And that will allow us to get some of the work done. I didn't mention earlier, when we were talking about the CARES Act funding, we're going to do the bathrooms and kitchen at George Washington this summer. And this will allow us to have the full month of June, July to do the work at George Washington Carver on renovating the bathrooms and the kitchen at George Washington. So that would get us a full two months to do that. All right? And we'll be able to use CARES Act three funding to do that ventilation and the renovations of the restrooms at George Washington Carver and the kitchen work at George Washington Carver. So we're excited about that piece also because we were originally planning to use all SPOS for that. So. And if there's no objections, we'll place the calendar on the consent agenda for the Ms. Hook, we discussed the calendar is the one we looked at, Calendar D back in the last board meeting. And the majority of the staff had said that was their preference. So we're presenting that for approval tonight. Elementary district lines at a retreat that we had back in February, we came to the board and discussed with the board members, moving the district lines at West Green for West Green Elementary School. Currently, if you cross the bridge on two twenty-one headed towards West Green and you cross the seventeen-mile river, the neighborhoods on the left side of the road and the Hidden Lakes area out on the left side of the road go to East Side. But we are asking the board to make the district line, the bridge and the seventeen-mile river so that when you cross the bridge over seventeen-mile river going on two twenty-one, anything across that bridge, any students across the bridge would go to West Green. And we have surveyed the transportation department and according to our transportation director, it won't require any changes with our buses. He can, he can do that with his current driver and his current bus. And instead of transporting those students to East Side, they would be transported to West Green. So presenting that to the board is a move that we want to make this coming season. I met with the school council at West Green, yes, sir, and discussed this and presented it to the school council at West Green and they were good with it. They were rather excited about it actually, knowing we're estimating somewhere around sixty to seventy. And we're estimating somewhere around sixty to seventy students that will be rezoned for West Green. And the staff at West Green was excited about receiving additional sixty students possibly.
Kids, won't we go to East Side, can they have a bunch of their own transportation?
Yes, sir. What I wanted to talk with the board about tonight is the students who are currently attending East Side, we do like we did Indian Creek last year. If you remember, we shut down out-of-district transfers to Indian Creek last year. We're gonna continue that. And we will do something similar with, but we let those families stay at Indian Creek that were already attended. So our plan is for students who are already attending East Side, we're not gonna make a move if the parents can provide transportation. But if the parents can't provide transportation, they're dependent on the bus transportation, they'll need to go on out to West Green, because that's where the buses will be running. All right? So that's what I'm asking the board to move forward with tonight. We had discussed Satilla at West Side after talking with Dr. Banks and looking at the numbers. We've not done this. I know that in the past ten years, we've not moved a district line. So we would like to, before we do another district line and talk about doing possibly something with the West Side or Satilla, let's work through this West Green change and see how this works out, because there may be some things that we're not aware of that could pop up. But do this with West Green first and see how it goes. And then if we want to look at district lines in some of the other schools. And the issue with West Side and Satilla was you really weren't gonna affect the enrollment. You were basically gonna move one from 600 to 635, and the other one from 635 to 600, or something like that. So you really, you weren't really gonna do a whole lot in regards to changing the enrollment status. You're just gonna make one bigger than the other that was previously swallowed. So.
Everybody have told you West Green district line?
All right. Our plan, I didn't call for a vote. I just thought it would be something, if we have y'all's consent, that we would just, we would go forward with administratively. And I've checked with the facilities department at Georgia Department of Education. All we have to do with them is in the fall, once the enrollment settles in, then we'll report our numbers to them, and they'll update our five-year facility plan. And actually, we'll do that here, update our five-year facility plan. But so that'll be our plan to move forward with the district line change at West Green. All right. Audience participation? All right. Well, this time, I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel and the hiring or evaluation or employment of personnel within the Coffee County school system. Need a motion?
Sure.
Raise the block. Be an executive session. Okay, we need a motion, James, and a flip decision.
I believe we have an executive session.
Mr. President, Mr. Gray. Leave the yard, it takes about five minutes.